Good evening, thank you everyone for coming. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
All those in favor? Mr. Reare.
Remedial math at Ranger School Denise LaFave, Elementary Strings Orchestra Renee Bond.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Reare, there's a couple of questions I have about the resignation of Ms. Bonds.
Mm-hmm.
She, uh...
Sorry, is my mic on?
So, um, this was a, as she made her, um, letter public, some questions have arisen from parents to me anyway. I just want to make sure this is clear, this is a resignation, not a dismissal?
That's correct.
And this is a resignation from the position, it's not a cancellation of the program?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, your business spotlight on success, a student leader report, anyone here from a student leader report? Oh, Grace, well if she comes in later, let me know, okay? High school band trip, Mr. Owles?
And Trevor Perry and Cooper Polish.
Okay.
You're up!
I'm not even sure what I'm supposed to, I have to introduce myself, Mike Owles, Director of Bands here at Tiverton High School. I'm not even sure what I am exactly supposed to say, I know I have two representatives from the senior class that are going to speak a little bit about their experiences in the band.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to immediately turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Okay. We're here representing the Tiverton High School Band, I'm graduate senior Cooper Polish.
I'm graduate senior Trevor Perry.
And we're just going to give you a synopsis of what happened to the band on our most recent competition in Hershey, Pennsylvania. The first group that performed was the Tiverton High School Concert Band, which earned a rating of excellent in the festival. Um, we scored first in our division and second overall in the festival.
The next group we performed with was the Tiverton Jazz Band, and we got a rating of superior with a 96.5, placing first in our division and first in the festival. And also, we went to Berkeley High School Jazz Festival, very prestigious contest, and placed third for the second consecutive year.
In our division.
Yeah, in our division.
And then the last group, well, the second group in the festival, but the last group that we have to mention is the Tiverton High School Marching Band, which earned a score, perfect score of 100, got first in our division, and also scored first in our festival with a ranking of superior. And we do have a brief clip of the marching band from that competition.
Nice. So either Knight or Cooper or whoever, what made that 100?
Well, the judges actually made it a point to come back out after the festival. I thought we had done something wrong, actually, when they came back out. You know, we've wanted to talk to you for a minute, so the kids were eating, and they just said they'd been doing it for a real long time, they were older gentlemen, and they'd never seen such attention to detail as we demonstrated. And one of the focal points that we have is try to make a comprehensive program across the board between marching, concert, and jazz ensembles. And I think a lot of the groups around today, they focus so much on the field show component of marching band, they sort of leave the parade aspect out of the mix a little bit. And we try to get ours to be coordinated from, you know, three visual points, from files, columns, and diagonals, and even down to like our step height this year, which we were able to really get some uniformity of step, as you saw in the clip. I mean, they really nailed it for that little, it's a hundred yard shot, pretty much, for all the marbles. And for that hundred yards, I tell you, they were pretty spot on. I'd never seen a hundred given in any festival, and I've been to 23 of them. And they even made it a point at the award ceremony to mention it to the entire participants of that festival, that they had never seen, you know, a score of 100 out of 100 in their tenure. So I was very proud of the ensemble, and it was a great way, we had 10 seniors graduate this year, and I was very proud of that group graduating, very special group that we had this year.
Okay.
Nicely done. Anything else, boys?
Well, I mean, we just want to thank you for picking the band.
That's what we try to do here, but thank you for your time.
I'd just like to say that all through the years, Tiverton High School's been famous for its music program, and its elementary and its middle school music, and we are very committed to that, as you've seen in our budget every year. One year we were highly criticized because we reinstated more money into it, because we saw that it was not going as well as it should have after we were cut that year. So I just want to thank all of you, and it's the parent involvement also, we know to get the kids there when they're little and everything. I went to the concert the other night, the strings concert, and I have to say, my grandson, it was so cute, he had started out on one of the instruments, the great big one, I don't know what it was. And I said to him, "Why didn't you, why didn't you do that?" And he said, "Oh, Shani, it wasn't good." I said, "What happened?" He said, "You should see the sounds I was making, it was like..." So I said, "But if you had continued with that and practiced like with your baseball and everything else, you would have done really well." But he said, "Oh no, it was really bad." So I just thank all the teachers and the parents and the music program. When my kids were here, kids would come back to the middle school and the high school, just because of the music program, so thank you very much. Now we have the high school drama club, the Wizard of Oz, Deb?
I think Kim Sondal is representing them.
Good evening.
Hi.
It's only been a couple of weeks since I stopped waking up to the tune of "We Welcome You Two Munchkins" in my head. Forty-five munchkins, which were elementary and middle school students in Tiverton, were in the play, and my husband was in the play. High school students, it was a Tiverton High School Drama production, but it was really a community event. It was fantastic to be a part of it. Getting 45 kids on stage every night was a challenge, but we had great parents who volunteered to come, and they were there every step of the way, and so this was truly a community endeavor. And I am proud of the work that we did. Still now, people come up to me and say, "Oh, you know, I heard that your son was in that play, and, you know, we loved it." People that don't even live in Tiverton, people came from all around to see the play. I think we had nearly 1,000 people see the play over the four-day run. It's the most tickets that I hear Tiverton High School has ever sold for a production. And so I just want to say, you know, go THS Drama. I asked Gloria Crist, you know, "Are you going to do something community-based next year as well, because it was so successful?" I asked her, "What did the high school kids think about this?", because it's their drama club, it's not my drama club. And she said that the kids were thrilled, and that they were looking forward to working with people in the community again. So she's actually trying to find some sort of production that we can do next year that can use more of the kids in town, and draw more people into the magic of theater.
How it was, it was fabulous, thank you very much.
Now, I understand, and because I had promised parents, and I'm not going to forget that promise, and I know you're looking at me, that they had asked if we could look into some sort of match, because there's lights missing and other things that they could use, if there was some sort of matching program. And while we can't discuss it tonight, I will definitely put it on a future agenda to see if we can't discuss that. But I know that several, at least 12, talked to me and said, "Hey, can we do some sort of match program?"
Yes, there were so many parents there, and a lot of people like me are alumni of Tiverton High School, and were involved in drama club, and we see that there have not been many changes to that theater since we went to school and performed on that stage. Basically, the, many of the upgrades have been donations from other theaters that have gone defunct. So we, you know, the drama department has grabbed that stuff and been able to use some of it. But there are many lights missing. The electrical is horrible.
And it was fabulous nonetheless.
Yes, yes, and, no, no, and, you know, what they were able to do with that, because I wasn't at all on the technical end of anything, that was mostly the kids. So that's what makes it even more spectacular, is that, you know, the students have learned enough through drama and theater to be able to work very, very old equipment and still put out a fabulous product.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much, Kim.
And tell Gloria.
Yeah, that's, if people don't know, our drama director is Gloria.
Gloria Crist.
Crist.
She's amazing. Tiger Pride Athletic Organization.
Congratulations to you on the band trip as well, Hannah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can I open the windows?
Is it cool out, or should I turn the air conditioner back on?
Try some air.
Hi, my name's Cody Tripp, and that's Hannah Hoyle. And we're part of a group called Tiger Pride. We started Tiger Pride this year, just as a, as a group of, originally it was the Tiverton Student Athletic Leadership Council. And that, we're a group of eight people, the founding fathers are Cody Tripp, Hannah Hoyle, Tim Murray, Julian Hughes, Brett Martin, Kelsey Mendoza, Alex Turner, and Stephen Gaitchuk. And Tiger Pride, we came up with a mission statement, our mission statements, like what we're trying to do with, you know, the environment of our school, and what we want to try and push, and how we want people to view being a tiger, and that, to have pride in it. And our mission is, our goal as the Tiger Pride team of Tiverton High School is to keep our student athletes living a healthy lifestyle and on the right path to success. We also strive to raise pride in our school, and to make sure that the attendance at our games is as high as possible. Overall, we will do our best to ensure that every student at Tiverton High School, not only athletes, are surrounded by a fun, safe, and drug and alcohol-free environment. Our last and most important goal is to ensure that every THS student takes immense pride in being a tiger. We did, uh, we held three events as the Tiger Pride team. Our first event was a game night that we did back in March, and I have some pictures of it right here. For game night, we set out, we sent out sign-up sheets, and originally we probably only had like 60, 70 people. The closer we got to it, we had about 100, and then I think about 130 students showed up that night. And then, you know, my little brother and sister were there, I seen a bunch of little kids, so I'd say about 150 people were there. I think that was fair. At game night, I think we had probably the biggest game of musical chairs ever. It went all the way around the gym, and eventually we broke it down, got smaller. The winner's in the bottom right corner, she, uh, she beat her, she beat her out by just a hair. But yeah, that was probably the biggest game of musical chairs. We played volleyball that night, it was real intense. Ping pong. We even had basketball, and it was just a night where kids could come and have fun, and we had beanbag toss out there, we had food, drinks, snacks. Even if you didn't come to play anything, you could sit down with your friends and just have a good night. And everybody enjoyed themselves, I had people asking me when we were going to do another one, how many more we want to have at the, before the end of the year, so... Then we did a volleyball tournament, because the, one of the biggest hits that game night was volleyball. A lot of people wanted to keep playing. And there's all, we had about seven teams, and we ran like a round robin style tournament. Teams got real creative, like Alex Cotton and his dad, they, on the bottom right, they wore masks, all sorts of crazy uniforms. And again, it was just another night where the gym was filled, the people even just watching come to have a good time. Mr. McKinnon, that was a, he was probably the best player there. And then again, everybody had a good time, and that's just, that's just our goal. And then we did three-on-three basketball. Not as many people came to sit and watch, because we were using, we used all the courts, pretty much. But people still came and sat and watched, those are the winners. And it was, it was real fun, I mean, nothing, nothing more fun than this. I had a great time doing it and playing in it, and everybody had a great time. And I think you can see it on their faces, they're just real happy. And that's, that's pretty much it for my slideshow, but, um, but we do pretty good things, and I think that we created a good environment for, for people to come and have a good time, and drug and alcohol-free night, you know, just come in and have fun. And we still, we have meetings, and we talk about more events we want to do. We still plan on having a walk during advisory period. Everybody's come out, and we'll walk around the track and just have a good time. I think that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cody.
Tiger's very proud of you, and the big tiger was there that night. And when, when they were playing musical chairs, you saw, at first they had them all around the gym, and as it started to close in, I said, "We're going to do this 80's style kids." And then I put the chairs the other way we used to play, when you knock people on the floor, well, they love that, because then somebody's not going to win, if you just have them all next to each other, they're all just going to squeeze together. So that was really fun, we had a great time. Thank you, and thank you to the people that helped organize that, Linda Lawson and the rest of the people, thank you very much. High school summer boat building, and also we'll talk about the launch of the boat during this presentation.
Are you coming up here? You're going to sit there?
No.
Just a few hours ago, actually, I'm going to invite Mr. Phillips up to give a little overview, but just a few hours ago, we launched the boat, the 16-foot skiff that the boat building kids made. Down at, what?
It'd be floating.
Down at Pirate Cove Marina at the Tiverton location, but I'll have Billy give a little overview.
We had a nice event this afternoon, a little bit of rain, but we had the Rhode Island Marine Trades Association come down. IRIS, the International Yacht Restoration School, came down. We had about 15 of our students, Mrs. Black was there with her tiger, so that was really fun. That's Brandon Kidd, who is the owner of Pirate Cove Marina. He's going to be a partner of ours from, you know, moving forward. So each year we'll, we'll be able to launch our boat from Pirate Cove Marina. We had a gentleman who lives in town who owns, what's the restaurant, Linda?
Subway.
Subway, and he donated like four big, four big sheets of food and stuff like that. So there's our boat being launched by one of the travel lifts that they have. And yes, I was a little nervous as it was going in the water, we dropped, we put Tiger up on top with a little bit of, a little bit of apple juice and some, some...
That was sparkling apple juice, everyone knows.
Just, just to be sure on that, everybody. We made sure the reporters got that correct.
And showed them the bottle.
And I did check just before I came here, it is still floating in the Secana River, so... It was, the dock had a little more trouble than our boat did, so...
It did, yeah, it was wobbly.
But overall, it was, it was a really nice day, and, you know, we should be in the newspaper a little bit. The kids there eating some of the Subway, which was a big hit as well, so... I don't want to take up any more time, but it was great, so thank you very much.
And what Mr. Phillips didn't mention is that Brandon Kidd graduated from Tiverton, and he played football for Mr. Phillips.
Correct.
So that was a really nice connection.
That was fun, that's the fun part.
That was, it really was.
So we had Rhode Island Marine Trades there, we had the International Yacht Restoration School. We had a representative from Sheldon Whitehouse's office, who's really supportive of the marine trades, and was very, you know, impressed that our school had something like this with students building boats, as well as our business and community partner. So the Herald News was there, the Secana Times was there, as well as the Newport Daily News, so go buy all the papers, all three editions tomorrow morning, so... The summer boat building program, we're going to have it again this year, just like we did last year. It's going to run July 7th through July 15th, Monday through Friday, 8 to 1. This is also a pre-apprenticeship program that is sponsored by the Rhode Island Marine Trades. It's also sponsored through the Governor's Workforce Board. Students, there'll be 10 of them that'll go through the program, they will build another, another skiff. They're going to do a couple of other projects as well. They're going to do outreach tours to Hinkley Yachts, New England Boat Works. A little change this year is the first part of it, where we brought junior achievement into our schools this year. They're partnering with this project as well. And the first part of the program is going to be job readiness, resume building, course skills, interviewing, all of those techniques that they're going to do before the boat building continues. Other than that, they'll come out, there'll be a finished product, there'll be another launch of another boat down at the International Yacht Restoration School, so students will come out of that with some skills, some job readiness skills, and OSHA certification as well. So that'll run July 7th through August 15th. Nice, thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. And the important thing about all this is we, at Tiverton High School, we always kept these programs. We have multiple career paths, we wouldn't let them go, even though we had tough budgets. A lot of other schools cut them, so they could have double M.A.T. and double E.L.A. But when you look at the faces of these students, you look in their eyes, and they're so happy, whether it be the band, or the sports, or the boat building, it's something you can't test or measure. It's the I-factor, I call it intangibles. And so when you see school ratings, that's just a very small piece of it. When I walk into Pecasa and all the other schools and see all the great things that are going on, that's just one number, so please everyone know, in the community, that it's the total child, the holistic education that we provide here, thank you very much. And then we have Tiger Vikings lacrosse.
I wasn't exactly sure how tonight worked, so I unfortunately do not have a slideshow. We do have a lot of great pictures to share, I'll have to make one for next time. Yeah, everyone can come up, everyone come up. This year was a result of hard work and commitment by 31 fantastic kids. Not a single problem with any kid all year long, so we could concentrate on lacrosse instead of all of the outlying stuff that, almost every other year I've coached both football and lacrosse, you always deal with it, it comes with the territory, but not this year, which was great. We have 11 kids who are not here from Rogers, they are getting a night like this for themselves over with their school committee tonight. But like I said, this did not happen overnight too, so I do want to point out, he's the only one here, so I'll point him out, a kid like Adam Lavoy, who played for me for three years. And we had some rough times. When I started here, it was, it was not pretty, we got beat by, my first year, I think double digits, every game that we lost. We were 2-12, and 12 losses by 10 or more. So we've put in the work, the kids, the seniors who are here, they put in the work as well. Like I said, it did not get built overnight, we do have some great first-year players, like Dylan Pacico, a kid who's never played lacrosse before, started the whole second half of the season for us, and was a major contributor. Kids like that stepped up, and that's how this year was possible. They say that coaches lose games and players win games. So I'd like to tell everyone, they were 16-0, and I was 0-2. I've been here five years now, the funny part is now, in the five years I've been here, we have 32 wins, and half of those were this year. So that tells you how special this year was. One more person I'd like to point out too, I actually have two assistant coaches this year. For the first time ever, in my first three years, I was actually by myself. But last year at practice, about two weeks in, Patrick Myers, standing in the back, comes up to me. I'm out there all by myself with 30 kids, "You need an assistant coach?" "Yes, please." Nothing more would make me happier. See, he's been here now for two years, he's here every day, he doesn't make a cent, he's just here to help the kids, volunteers.
Have you come up?
My other assistant is at the Rogers School Committee tonight, he's a Rogers teacher, but with those 11 kids, he puts them on a bus every day and drives them over here. So I tell him, oh, his job's harder than mine, to deal with 11 kids in a little 12-passenger bus for two hours every day. We make jokes about the conversations, I'm sure you've all heard of the conversations that 16-year-olds have. So I know I'm rambling, I just want to say, very, very proud of every kid that's here, every kid who's not here. They got along so well, it's not easy to join two schools and go along perfectly for three months that we've been out here. And like I said, I could not be happier, I could not be more proud. It didn't hit me right away, which was funny. I've been working so hard for this with these kids all year long, for, like I said, five years. The first day was just relief, there was really no excitement for me, working so hard, it was nice to relax. But since then, it's just, it's hit me so much, and I couldn't be happier and thank the kids for that, because they're the ones who do it. For people who have been here, all I do is sit and yell on the sidelines. I'm very loud, I always tell them, I tell the kids, "If I'm yelling at you, it means I care about you. If I'm not yelling, then you have to worry," and I'll yell twice as loud when you do it the right way. And like I said, when they do it the right way, I don't do anything, they do everything. Hopefully, and a lot of the kids here are young, it felt so good this year, we're going to go for another one next year. Thank you very much!
Boys, hold on. Could you introduce yourselves?
One by one.
Thank you.
I'm Billy Armstrong, I'm a freshman, and this is my first year playing lacrosse. And yeah.
Would you also state the position you played?
I played attack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brett Martin, sophomore, and I played defense, this is my second year playing for the high school.
I'm Sean Donovan, I'm a sophomore, I'm a defenseman, this is my first year playing.
I'm Nick Bortman, junior, and that's my first year playing.
I'm Greg Johanning, and I'm a midi, I played for six years, I'm a freshman.
I'm Brian Donovan, it's my first year, I'm a sophomore, and I played midi.
I'm Dylan Furtado, second year playing, midi, sophomore.
I'm Dylan Pacico, I'm a senior, it's only my first year playing, I really regret not playing now, but I had a great time this season.
I'm Evan Sanford, I'm a sophomore, and I'm midi, it's my second year playing.
I'm Ian Rashan McNally, I'm a midi, I'm a sophomore, and this is my third year playing.
Is that everyone?
I'm Matt Lavoy, my first year playing, and I'm defense midi.
I'm Nathan Johanning, this is my second year with the program, I was injured my freshman year, I'm a junior, I play defense.
I'm Tristan Silva, and this is my first year playing, I'm a freshman, and I play attack.
And before you guys leave, I just want to say, this is a very new program. All of us remember when this program was started, and I want to give a shout-out to the parents, both yours and the ones who started this program. They fundraised for a long time without, you know, to keep this going. And without all of your parents, along with all of you, this program, you know, it wouldn't be here, it wouldn't be as successful. So it really is a nice effort between you and your families, and I know that that has brought you to where you are, and we couldn't be prouder.
And also Rogers and those parents, the fact that we all came together was fabulous.
Thank you, boys.
I just want everyone to know, it was at the game there, every time they scored, someone got this tail, so everyone wanted to sit around it. Newly sprayed gold, it was fabulous. Thank you.
You're, they're going to the State House tomorrow to be recognized?
State House, yep. Tiger will have to go through security again, I'm a little nervous. Chat, those dining services, Mr. Fiore?
Just thank you, Mrs. Black, we wanted to recognize Mr. Phillips again, Paul DePasta, and Dennis Lachatel of Chatwells, who were responsible for the finishing of the large push-up block tables in the kitchen. We're at the point where we weren't going to be able to use them anymore, so we took the initiative and did it internally. So there were 19 students that helped, and we've put the names in the memo. that helped, and we've put the names in the memo that I circulated, and they were rewarded with a pizza party by Chatwell. So we just wanted to thank our staff and the students for their efforts.
Okay, thank you. Newport County Mentoring Program, that's the program we've been members of for years and trying to get something off the ground, and it's finally catching on. We went to a STEAM Summit, Linda and a few others, at Rhode Island College, and it was called Creating Rhode Island's Future Building Capacity for STEAM. And people were there, from Sheldon White Houses, again, from Brown, URI, Rick, New England Tech. There were just so many people there, the Providence Chamber of Commerce, and we had breakout sessions, and we talked about filling the skills gap between what the people say, that we don't have the kids ready, and we say, yes, we do have fabulous kids, just tell us what you need, and then we'll fill the skills gap and get everyone jobs, and that's what we're trying to do. And the guest speaker was a woman named Mrs. Honey. She had a PhD, and she's the head of the museum in Queens, which is a maker museum. So they're talking about getting away from science fears and going into this maker stuff, and it's very exciting, even down to elementary and middle school, so that's what we'll try to do. And the reason we go to all these things is so that we can get Tiverton on the map, 'cause everyone forgets about us, you know? Like, my husband went on a trip, and he came home from Washington with the elder Claiborne pal, and he said to him, "Where do you live?" He said, "I live in Tiverton." And Pell said to him, "You mean that appendage?" And so it's like, no, we're part of Newport County. And when I go places in Fall River, they introduce me as a member of Greater Fall River. They're more accepting in Massachusetts than they are here. So we have to end that. So we're gonna show up at everything. We just show, "Oh, hi, here we are." And so then we had a visit from Christopher from the Rhode Island Marine Trades, and he came to the school and to see what the things we're doing. He's from the Workforce Career and Development. And so if we connect with them and all the other people from Marine Trades and Iris, and then we get into all these programs. So it's really exciting, everything that's going on. We held on to the programs, as I said, and now they're gonna get stronger because of our partnerships. So things are working well with that Newport County Mentor, finally, right? It's been a few years. We just keep showing up and nothing happened. But Chris Seminelli did a great job, and we had the STEAM Summit in Newport. And so this is a continuation of that. Linda, anything else on that?
No, it's just Mr. Madison. We're dealing with him and the Rhode Island Making Factory Association. We took the students to Electric Boat. We had Electric Boat come here as well, talk about opportunities. That came out of Newport County Mentoring Co-op Group. And we went to a Raytheon Tour in March, and we just received word that in August, two of our students have been selected for summer internships, and that was part of that visit as well. So they'll be attending two weeks, three days a week, working with the engineers there in their facilities. So that came out of Newport County Mentoring Co-op Group as well.
And when we were at the summit, there was a woman there from North Carolina they brought in to be the guest speaker, and she was speaking about textiles. So I looked at Linda, and I said, "Textiles?" And she was complaining because the textiles had left North Carolina and gone overseas. But what she doesn't know is first, they left Fall River to go to North Carolina and the word is textiles. So I told them that after she left, and they were all laughing. Because we were one of the biggest in the world, and actually, the Braun Mill was the largest employer of the town, a thousand people. So, okay, now we have Perkins Grant, proposal?
Yes, the committee has a proposal that I've reviewed. I've also met with Mrs. Larson. It's a request for $10,500, seeking grant money to help train our tech ed teachers in the Project Lead the Way Engineering Pathway Program. And Linda's here to answer any questions. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's simply a request to, request to get the funding, to see if it's available. And it'd be a great way to jumpstart, not jumpstart, but to help continue what we're doing down in tech ed by bringing in, it's a formalized program for engineering.
Any questions on that? No? Was that just for information, Mr.?
Or do you need a motion to accept?
The way we've been doing it, I would prefer a motion. That's what we've been doing.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any questions from anyone?
So what's the timeline? When is the application due, and when would you hear back?
Yesterday. No, you know how that is.
Yesterday, no. The application is due to the Rhode Island Department of Education, June 20th. They will start their review process, and we should hear back the end of July. So actually, probably the midpoint of July. I don't wanna rush them too much. But it'll be a planning grant, which is available through Perkins Funds, through their Initiative Grant Block. Currently, we do receive funding for the school-based coordinator through the Initiative Grant. So there's additional funds that are available there to apply for, for planning. That would also then open us up for future to their categorical grants. So once we get an approved program, such as an Engineering Pathway, like Mr. Rerrick mentioned, then we'd have the opportunity to apply for additional funding.
Nice. And it's a really good program, Project Lead the Way. They just started it at Duffey also. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Rerrick?
Seeking permission from the committee to go out to bid for the items that I have listed. These are all items that are in our budget, and if we get them out this week, we should have them in for approval by the committee at our July 8th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to go out for bid for the items listed under sixty.
Second.
Any questions? No? All those in favor? Okay, Mr. Rerrick and Mrs. Senna?
Yes, the next issue is a request to make a, well, not make a change, but to purchase a K-4 math program called Eureka. The reason for why we're asking for it now, as I believe I stated in my memo, is that Diane and the teachers and the principals were still looking at materials. At the time, we did our budget, so it wasn't available to us. They believe, and they're here tonight to speak at greater length, they believe that this program is the one that we want to adopt, and eventually adopt K through eight. But for next year, it'll be K through four. We already have $12,515 in our existing budget, which we normally spend on supplies to support the math program. And what we're asking for, if the committee would approve it, is to take $15,853 out of our total dollars that were approved in the budget for E.L.A. curriculum, for E.L.A. and for curriculum support there. It would still leave us $70,367 left to support the E.L.A. curriculum. But this is our second year that we'll be doing the math program, and it's really the right time to, you know, make the jump, based on the conversations I've had with Diane and the principals on it. Diane, wanna add to?
Well, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I do have some samples of the program. I can describe it. It's not, it's not much of a change as far as what we're currently teaching. Many of the units, teachers have already worked with, but we were trying to use those units out of sequence to fill our spoken sequence. And now what we would like to do is adopt the program according to their sequence, and implement all of the modules.
And the professional development to support this, when will that take place? Will there be some for all the grades at the beginning of the year, or are they all gonna be spread out?
One of the things that we're looking at, and I haven't had a chance to discuss this with Mr. Rerrick, but we have Teacher Orientation Day. There's a possibility that we could maybe do an hour and a half overview of the program. If not, we will go to our first Professional Development Day on September 9th. The problem is, when they're K through four, it's not as personalized. I'd rather break it up. So we do have September 9th as one day, and then beyond that, as you know, in the budget for next year, we have grade-level meetings established, the way that Barrington implemented, and it was very successful, is they did quarterly grade-level meetings and kind of pre-taught the units that were coming up. And they had a consultant there that was able to talk through the new units with teachers. I'd like to do it that way.
Do we have funding for the consultant?
That would be part of, that's part of the request. It's not in addition to. It's part of the dollars that we have. In other words, it's revenue-neutral, cost-neutral. We're just reallocating our money. We'll have less for E.L.A. curriculum development for next year, in order to purchase the math.
But like you said, that's okay, because this is the second year.
This is the second year, and we're still working on the E.L.A., so I think it would be a good investment for us to do that now.
This may seem like a silly question, but I didn't see it really spelled out. This supports Common Core, I assume?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was designed for Common Core. Many districts are using it and finding success. The strategies and the visual models that are used within it are, you know, very closely aligned to the standards. And we do have some teachers here that have been working with it and looking at it and have gone on a site visit to Barrington.
They don't need to.
If anyone wants to chime in. But from everything that we've seen, it's top quality as far as the instructional piece, the alignment. Also, many of the models, I'm finding out as I do more research, actually come from the Synifor Math Program as well. So it's very research-based, and from what we see, I think it will really fit our needs as far as providing a solid foundation for mathematics, resources for our teachers, and that's something that was lacking previously.
And what did we use now? What will we be using this year? Just sort of a hodgepodge?
Yeah, this year, we took the best resources that we could find at the time, but they're really more supplemental resources, and teachers were having to.
Fill it in, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that took time, too.
Yeah, it takes a lot of time, a lot of energy.
Yeah.
So this would really alleviate a lot of problems. And lessons, assessments, would all be there for them.
Let's just make sure where this is new, that we sort of touch base again in the spring, see what you think, if you like, how it's working, and, you know.
We'll do it during the budget cycle, because we'll be looking at five, eight.
Because I think that's kinda how a lot of this new stuff is gonna be, and what did we think?
Yeah, and then, you know, maybe, hopefully not have to delay, but if you had to, we would delay it. But, yeah, we'd be bringing it up. I wonder, do we do budget December? So that's a good time to.
So you see this as something, until Son of Common Core comes to haunt us, you see this as what we would be using for the foreseeable future as the, as the curricular support for Common Core?
One of the things we talked about with Diane and the principals is that we had to be sure, and again, it's the best information we have.
Right.
Because we don't have the luxury of going in eight different directions. Let's see if this works. Invest $30,000. So we're, it's gonna be used for a while. And this is the direction we're gonna go.
Because at least some, I mean, some sense I get is that people are saying, we don't really know what the texts or the supportive curriculum material will ultimately be for Common Core or Son of Common Core, that that's gonna evolve as well, but.
That's possible, you know, over time, but right now, this is the best available, that we believe is the best available.
And also, it's an organization that's making updates to it as far as teacher feedback. And there is an online component, so we would have access to anything new that they did develop. Or as the program expands and they offer more professional development videos, things like that, we would have access to that as well. So it's a program that will continue to grow, and so we'll have access to the new pieces as they come out.
Without necessarily spending more money, or that would have to be something?
We'd be able to pick and choose.
They have an online subscription that we will get for each building for this first year. It's free. Beyond that, it's about $120. But it provides you with K through four, all of the resources online, plus professional development videos and webinars, and any new resources that they.
$120 for the district?
Per school.
Per school.
And we already have money that's available, so, and they'd always be able to access.
That's good, that's reasonable. Would any of the teachers like to say anything?
They don't.
Teachers? We would love to hear from you.
When we visited Barrington, I'll be very honest, I was a skeptic, because like Diane said, we had used a lot of the lessons out of order, and we were really finding that a challenge. But when we visited Barrington and we got to see the whole thing kind of laid out for us, and they were really very open about the process and how they had implemented. For me, it kind of clicked, like, okay, this is more than we have. It's something viable that we could use. Everything is there for you. I'm sorry, Andrew, as I put my hand over you. And the teachers were more than willing to work with us. I'm actually going back with my co-teacher for a second site visit, because they've taken those lessons and organized them in a management system that's more elementary-friendly. And so we get the benefit of actually learning from their bumps in the road.
Right.
We can kind of fix some of those things as we go. Parent education was a big problem for them. They didn't do enough of it in the upfront. So that's something in the back of our minds that we know that we maybe need to do more of in the beginning of the year. I just feel like this year, we really, I'll be honest with you, as a twenty-eight year veteran, I struggled. And so I'm looking for something that is consistent, that I can go next door with my partner and plan, and know that we're on the same page, using similar materials. And when I send homework, it's similar to her homework. Just makes sense. Thank you.
Diane, are any of the districts that you visited using the five through eight?
Barrington implemented in grades K through five this year. They're expanding to grade six the year after. And I'm not sure about the other districts. I would have to check in with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Truver. It's extremely valuable to hear from the teachers.
It is.
Especially as the designated math assistant, homework assistant.
[laughing]
I can't tell you how much I'm looking forward to trying this out, 'cause what I'm getting home right now doesn't make any sense to me.
I think for parents, some of the vocabulary we challenge, and so we need to be good about making sure that goes home ahead of time, and, yeah, it's for the parents.
Be happy to trial it for you.
Yeah, so will I.
So we have a little vocab sheet.
I babysat the other night for the twins, and I said, "Did you do your homework?" And they said, "No." And I said, "What do you have?" And they said, "Math." I said, "Oh, no." And my sister said, "What do you mean?" I said, "Wait till you see." So I'll be glad to be helping with you.
Do you need a motion or just information?
A motion. A motion, so we have it on record, please.
I'll make a motion that we purchase and implement Eureka Math. Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all that hard work, and the teachers also, and soon to be.
Uniform Chart of Accounts?
Yes, this item, Deb asked to have it placed on the agenda during one of our June meetings, and here's the data.
So I, one of the things, when the Uniform Chart of Accounts came out, when it was really new, it wasn't very reliable, because everyone wasn't putting things in the same buckets. But now that it's been, it's a few years in, it's really reliable. I think it'll be really helpful for us just to understand on a per pupil basis where our money's going. I don't, certainly don't expect that, you know, we're gonna get through, you know, all seventy-two pages of these tonight. I think it's just really to start the conversation, start looking at some of the things we have questions on, because I would guess that, you know, Superintendent Rerrick and Doug are probably gonna have to go back on some of these things, and really just start having a discussion. Like, when I was looking at it, one of the things is, you'll notice is, we're higher in nursing on a per pupil basis, but we know that, because we know we've chosen to, at least for now, have a nurse in every elementary school, where many districts don't. So some of these answers are, we know the answers for, but I just thought it would be, it's gonna be a good exercise for us throughout the summer, to really understand where we're spending our money, make sure that's where we want to continue spending our money, because when budget season comes, it's too late to have this discussion. So that was really the point.
If I can just point out, if Doug divided it up into three sections, on the top right,
he's, for example, on the page one, it says summary. This is like the macro view of the chart of accounts. And then, and we've talked about this before, then you get into the function. It's more detailed.
Yep.
And then if you go to, I'm trying to read his handwriting, then you go to subject level, you even go into per subject.
So the deeper you get into the pages, the more break.
The farther you go, the more accurate it is. And I found it beneficial when I gave my report to the committee.
Yeah, to put it that way, yeah.
Was to look at the function, and then the, by subject. I mean, you can look at it a million different ways.
Yeah.
But that gives you a whole lot of important data, just in those two areas. And then you can even go further to subject detail.
And you had given us the summary of findings before, so.
I actually pulled out some of the pages. This is only about half of the seventy-two pages. The other half is just straight dollars. It doesn't give you the ability to.
Right, and that's what we wanted. We wanted just the per pupil, or I did.
Because that name was curious, why we don't have the entire.
Yeah, because the problem with the dollars is it doesn't always give you a sense of where you're spending it. And the problem with the percents is it can look at.
And the problem with the percents is it can look at, look like it's, oh, it's only one percent, but it's one percent of twenty-five million. And it may not look important, but when you look at the per pupil, it may jump out at you. So I think that's why I decided really just to focus on the per pupil.
This information for 2012 has been out there a while, and we've been through it a few times. And we're pretty comfortable with the variations and why they're there and what the explanations are. I'll be happy to send out the same data for 2013 when Ride makes it available. But I think we're, we pretty much know why things are where they are. And we're comfortable, more importantly, that the information's accurate.
So, yeah, so I'll just throw it out if you guys have any initial.
Well, I have a general question to begin with, because you mentioned the different levels.
Can you just tell us which page?
So I'm on page seven of seventy-two. And I highlighted all of the ones that were, we were well above or well below the suburban average. But am I correct in this understanding? For instance, number forty-three on page seven, out of district obligations, where we're about eighteen-hundred per student as opposed to a little over eleven-hundred. That is composed of, or broken down on page twelve, four thirty-one, the three-digit number that starts with forty-three.
That's correct.
Public parochial private charter pass, and I'm assuming that's pass-through or something.
Yeah.
And they also include in out-of-district obligations, retiree benefits?
No.
Because that's four thirty-two?
Retirement benefits is four thirty-two.
Right. But it starts with forty-three, just like public parochial private charter.
No, four thirty-one is public parochial private charter pass-throughs.
But no, no, Carol's correct. If you look at function and you want to see the detail.
Yeah, if you add those two, it's seventeen ninety-one.
You would go to the four three, one, two, three. So, and the intent of function is to highlight anything that's out of district. So technically, retirees aren't part of in-district costs.
But that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
That's why you go by function.
Right. You really have to go down to the three-digit numbers.
But you can look at a different, if you want to look at object or job class or another way of slicing the information, and you're not necessarily constrained by looking at function. So if something does look unusual, there's other ways to get at the same intervention.
But by.
And I think, really, the issue with that category, as I see it, is we're relatively high because of the out-of-district costs for Rogers and Met School.
That's what's in that.
That's what it is.
That's what's in that category.
That's what's driving that fourteen twenty-six.
Yeah. That's what it is.
Yeah.
We are a little high on our retiree benefits, but really, the driver is.
Met and Rogers.
Yeah.
And so, that would not include, that out-of-district obligations forty-three does not include out-of-district placement for special ed?
Right. That category.
Special ed.
That would manifest itself in another category. And I'm going to, let's see.
What category is that?
Special education, isn't it?
Unless I'm looking for it.
On the function code, it would be buried within regular teaching. So you wouldn't be able to really pull it out that way.
Oh, so it's in one-eleven instructional teachers?
But it's evident in other categories.
There's the detail.
Like, and if you go to the subject slice, you can see the sped breakout there.
If you go to page eight.
So I'm looking at nineteen of seventy-two.
Yeah.
You can see sped broken out. And it's pretty evident.
Right.
We're above average there, and that's why. So depending on how you look at the information being sliced, you have to just be careful that what you're looking for is what's there.
And again, that would be one of those, I think that's that question we always come back to special ed, that we belong to a collaborative, as do some of our other suburban, well, not, I guess, some of them. And yet, we're like, you know, eight hundred dollars per pupil more.
You can see, when I've looked at this, a lot of that's attributed to the children that are out-of-district place. It's not necessarily the ones that we're keeping here. So if you, when you go through, you can find the category for our tuitions that go out-of-district for special ed. And we're above average there. So you can see what components of sped are driving that.
Although, on page fifty-nine of seventy-two, we're way over for occupational therapists, about three times. We're way over for physical therapists. Don't they come to us through the collaborative? And why would we be spending so much more if we're getting them through the collaborative?
It's your need. When you have special ed, you have, it's based on what the children need.
Yeah. But as a state, is our need that much greater than every other suburban district?
And all of the, yeah, the state and the suburban, because that's what we have.
The answer to that question is no. Those employees aren't paid through Newport County. We actually pay the invoices, so they're considered, they're grouped in with the out-ofplacement bills. So you're, the premise that they're through Newport County doesn't really follow for that. They're really considered outside vendors.
So our occupational therapists and our physical therapists, we do not go to the.
They're not paid through Newport County.
We don't.
They're actually outside vendors.
So, but why wouldn't we get occupational therapists and physical therapists through the special ed collaborative? They're not considered.
The needs are probably so specialized.
You don't hire occupational therapists. We go through outside agencies. And the region serves as a clearinghouse for those services.
And do they get us a discount on those services?
We get the best possible price.
They contract for us. So they basically would arrange for the payment, and then.
These are conversations that we have at my level, at the region level.
But we're still paying three and four times the average suburban district for those.
I mean, I would be curious, and maybe this is other data, like, to look at what our regional partners pay for those kinds, like, what do their numbers look like? And I mean, I know it's need-based, but.
I think if you're going to go dig that, I mean, you can look at this a lot of ways.
Right.
But I think the most compelling information is what we pay per subject. We are under the state average in all our core content areas. We are under in English, math, science. We're below the state average.
Right. What page is that on?
That should concern us more right now than what we're paying for occupational therapists.
Except that if we, we have to look at where we're over and where we're under, because in order to bring up where we're under, we're going to have to cut from where we're over.
I think you need how you want to look at it. That, when we talk about math scores, well, if we're paying below the state average for math, and our scores aren't where we want them to be, that's a conversation we might want to have.
So I guess I.
Right.
And all the areas that we're over, we're over in nursing. We're over in.
Guidance.
Guidance. We're over in.
Tech ed.
Student service instruction, which includes our community service.
Special ed.
I'm sorry, it's our community service director. So that's above the state average. So there are things, if you want to go at them to reduce, it's, we can do that. But we also need to look at what we're not paying for.
Yes, yes.
I agree.
Right. And that.
Music and theater is above the state average.
Yeah.
While math is under.
Right. Math is significantly under. Natural sciences is significantly under.
That's science, right. Social sciences, social studies. And tech ed is our business manager, our business teacher. Literacy is also under. It's two ninety-eight to three oh-four.
Right. But that's, that's pretty close.
Just to jump back to special ed, I really don't look at the components of sped as much as I do in the aggregate, because, I mean, one, one student can skew a particular category.
Okay.
What I do have is the summary of special ed.
Yeah, okay.
And the state provides the average per, per region. And what I, for Portsmouth, for example, this is, actually, Middletown is sixty-seven thousand, seventy dollars per sped student. Portsmouth, sixty-four thousand, three fifty-two. And we're third of those three at fifty-five, three sixty-four.
Oh, so that's what you look at, when you're looking at.
Yeah. Because when you dig into that level of detail.
That's your total cost for every, they base it on a full, that's every child who gets maybe speech twice a week.
Right.
They add them all up to get an FTE, a full-time equivalent. Then they take your cost and divide it by that. So that's by our cost, which is significantly less than our neighbors that are part of the collaborative.
So it's hard, like, yeah, you can look at the little tiny components, but it's so easy to swing one way or the other that it's best just to look at it.
One residential plate, so they may skew the entire.
I'll use Middletown. Middletown had five students move in this past year from out-of-district. That cost them six figures twice over, I believe. I mean, it was a significant influx that would, if they were looking at their number for, you know, however, whatever, however it would be in these, it would be spiked, you know, once these numbers get updated. So that kind of data is probably, speaks truer to the cost of special ed.
Because I, I think you're right. I don't think, you know, the sixteen, five sixteen, we aren't going to see any big, huge jumps on that. So it's having to deal with, and we may say no. We may say, no, we're happy with where we are. But it's, starting to look at over the summer, do we want to see shifts and where? I mean, because we have to give the superintendent direction. And it may come to the point, it may be the discussion is, well, no, we know why we're spending it, and we're, you know, we're fine. Or no, we're not, and we really think we need to shift resources.
Now, some things, again, are clear. We're over in food services. I understand what food services are, consist of.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a function of, we're relatively small, and you need a certain amount of administrative, no matter the size of the district. So we just have less people to serve that number over, and it looks like we're.
We're over in student transportation. You know, I understand buses. Page twenty-six of seventy-two, professional educational services were three times the suburban average. And I don't know what that is.
That's a very good question. That also is a component of sped. Those are personal care attendants that end up in that category, so.
So if you have one or two students who require.
Which we do.
Professional care, personal care.
I had that one, too.
Okay. So, you know, professional education, but that's really, like a health aide?
That's just how they classify it.
I had that one, Mark, too. I was wondering.
Yeah, we are high in that, and it's sped related to the personal care attendants.
Yeah. So part of it is even understanding, you know, what these lanes include, whether it's skewed because of one or two individuals.
Right.
So what's the difference between student services instructional and instructional teachers?
Student service instruction, again, is the student assistance counselor, and it's our full-time community service person.
What page is that?
Two fourteen, on page twelve of seventy-two, up at the top. So it's the student assistance counselor.
Well, most districts don't have a full-time community service.
So it's Whittville, the student assistance counselor?
Community service and the SAC, right, student assistance counselor. Now, keep in mind, the student assistance counselor, our portion is just under eleven thousand dollars.
Right.
But our student, the, the community service person, salary-wise, and Doug can correct me, is in the mid to upper fifties, and that's not including benefits. So you're looking at one position that's, you know, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, once you get all the benefits.
Is that full-time?
Yeah. Always has. It's been.
They're both not. Yeah.
No.
No.
They're full-time. But the student assistance counselor works every day and gets paid a lot more money.
Three, what are they?
What's that?
You mean the other one?
I forget. Three fifths, four fifths?
For what?
Students' assistant counselor.
Student counselor is, student assistance counselor's full-time, but split between two schools.
Two schools, yeah.
So they're both full-time?
Right. Where the communities.
But you're right. That's, that's something that's over-doubled.
And yet, I thought that was also.
But curriculum development, we're like at twenty-two versus one oh-seven.
Mm-hmm. Which isn't a surprise.
Right.
Now, that will go up, because that, the number you're looking at here doesn't account for the two days that we now have in the contract.
Right, the new ones, right?
So that number, when you get the new ones, should be reflective.
Or two years down the road.
Or two years, whenever.
With the ELA and.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those will all start to push, that category should push up, because we're dedicating more money to it.
So maybe we should start, like, page seven. Anybody have any questions on, really, on page seven? Like, one at a time. Make sure we understand, and we'll dig down, and we'll quit at some point, and then we can dig down later at another meeting.
Sure.
So looking at page seven.
Right. So we know that the out-of-district obligations includes retirees and public parochial private pass-throughs.
And the face-to-face teaching, that includes the special ed teachers.
When you look at it in this big, like, macro view, yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's really just the whole per-pupil cost, broken out into various.
That's very close.
Into like ten categories.
That special education is varied in various of those categories.
Multiples, that's correct.
On this slice, but then if you look at.
But then, right, that's correct.
But we're just going to look at this one.
That's correct.
And again, the same thing. Classroom materials, we're like almost half of what the average suburban is. That's papers, pencil, right?
Mm-hmm.
But not textbooks. That's a separate category?
Here, that would be.
I think it's the same, isn't it?
I believe that is included here.
So it's paper, pencils, textbooks?
One, two. Technology would also roll in there, so if we're not spending a lot on technology for students.
Wow.
Right. Because one twenty-one is pupil-use technology and software. So that, because, so classroom materials, if that's a twelve, the only three-digit number, starting with one and two, that we have listed are pupil-used technology and software, and instructional materials slash trips slash supplies. So does that mean those two are the only components?
That's correct.
So it's papers, pencils, text, technology, like, computers that.
And software programs, yeah.
Wow. And we're half?
Yeah. Because techno, all of the technology categories were very low.
But that's not, it shouldn't surprise anybody.
So.
Sometimes it does.
Can I just jump in for a second? Because I sort of went through this and thought I understood it, and I think I did, although I've had some insight just in this discussion here. It seems to me there's three things, rather, I'm not sure that we can go through it page by page.
Yeah.
Because there were seventy-two of them, although I guess they're not all in there sequentially.
Yeah, they're not all.
And there's probably even more data if we went to the website and downloaded everything. It seems to me the things we really maybe want to understand, because, and then focus on, and the first thing is this special education. I don't think we can, maybe we can control those costs, but I'm not sure that we really understand them yet. Or at least, the committee doesn't understand them yet exactly that number of, I think it's four thousand or something like that, per pupil cost, and why we're so much higher than the other comparable districts or the category that we're in. Although Doug had some interesting things to say about that just, just now. So I think that would be one thing that, if we understood special education, you know, over the next several meetings, that would be a, I think, big boost in our insight. The second is the subject by cost, because I think that's what's driving, at least, you know, until we come to some sort of parity, that would be the most obvious reason why our scores are where they are, if they're not meeting where we want them to be. And then I guess the other thing that I'm quite interested in is what are, really understanding our out-of-district costs, both the pass-throughs, the other tuitions, the costs that were, and I didn't really see this broken down specifically, sort of what are the costs that we are, you know, are in our budget, but are actually going to the parochial schools or private schools. They're in here somewhere, I assume.
The only thing that would.
Transportation.
Transportation.
And books.
Textbooks.
In textbooks.
And whatever special ed services.
They come back here.
That we would need to provide.
For that, yeah.
Right.
So that's hidden, that's buried.
I think that's a valuable thing to understand about.
Yeah, that's buried into the numbers as well.
Right. So, but when we have a budget of twenty-five million, it'd be nice to be able to say, well, thirty cents of that is going to, say, Philomena's or some other school, or three million of it's going to those schools, you know. I think that's something that's important for us to understand, as well as for the people who are ultimately voting on the budget, i.e. the taxpayers.
I just.
Do we need to leave, Jack?
What's up?
What's up? Out of, we will be able to provide, like, number of kids that get serviced there, types of services. But I don't believe UCOA breaks it down the way you see the data here. I mean, we can give you, you know, our, you know, number of kids and what services and what the cost is.
We may have other sources of information that's not just the UCOA.
Right. No, but that's what I'm saying. We can provide, but it wouldn't be in necessarily this format.
The textbooks for out-of-district private school would be easy. Transportation's a little more difficult, because they're combined with sped kids and other kids going to the island for maybe Rogers or something. So that would be a little bit better.
And I doubt though.
No, we only have two buses. But what portion of that would be, we could get a count maybe from First Union.
Well, and those are not necessarily costs, nor are necessarily the special education costs, costs that we can control. But I think that that's useful information, sort of what's going out of the district that's in our budget. What it, you know, what are the special education costs? Because we're significantly higher there, probably most, you know, more than any other category, I think that seems to be the biggest outlier. And then also, understanding better our per-subject costs, because we are skewed, you know, sort of towards less, you know, spending less on some of the more classically academic subjects and, you know, else, not that much on the other, you know, we're not that higher on music or arts or other things that I could, that I recall, so.
Well, and that's probably going to be enough for this budget season.
Right.
And then next year, we'll dig even deeper.
But it's good to have, you know.
By all means. If we try to just get our hands or our minds around those things.
So out-of-district, special ed.
Special education, out-of-district.
And focusing on the subject.
And per-subject costs.
Which is Bill, like Bill said, that's how he looks at it.
Right, and that's good. And the most important thing is look at the detail of this, you know, every penny it's like, you know, for the community, right?
Comprises the number, subject area costs, you know, district costs, what are we obligated to?
That one line, we talked about public parochial, private charter pass-through, and that includes Met and Rogers. They are the charter pass-throughs, right? Do we have any, what is an example of a public pass-through or a parochial pass-through?
Well, that's exactly.
Or a private pass-through?
Those are the out-of-district costs.
But it's, no, it's not the special ed out-of-district.
Public pass-through is the charter school.
But those are the out-of-district obligations that Jerry needs to know how information.
That's what I'm talking about.
If we had other charter schools, it would affect.
If we had private charter schools, for example.
Oh, okay.
A Quinick Island charter school, and it was a private chartered, that would also be included there.
And a parochial pass-through?
That wouldn't affect us, we wouldn't have anything.
Okay, so, so we actually, it's not like we're paying another public school to educate one of our kids, or paying another parochial school to educate one of our kids.
You could say Met and Rogers.
It's only Met and Rogers, okay, only Met and Rogers.
Met and Rogers is set up where districts don't have a choice on the Department of Ed. You have to send them there if they want to go.
What about like?
Fourteen hundred per student, for every student?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to figure out what that number.
We have fifteen students at three-quarters of our per-pupil cost for next year, going to the Met School. That's based on this year's number. That's assuming we don't get any more incoming freshmen.
Is it going up again next year?
Yes, it goes up until it's full.
It goes up again till it's full.
Next year, it's three-quarters of our per-pupil.
And I think this is the issue that I certainly have been reading about, only because I have people that live in those districts, that Cumberland and Lincoln are now dealing with, because the funding formula was written to say the money follows the child. Unfortunately, the costs do not.
Exactly.
And they're just not fixing it, right? It's just not.
The dollars, for example, for us to, using our money, is higher than what it's costing to educate, but we're losing the money. We're not getting, in other words, if it's nine thousand at the Met to actually educate them.
Which we're not, we love the Met.
Which is fine, but we're paying, I don't know, twelve.
Right.
So it's not equal, and that's what Doug's talking about.
Well, and if that student was in our system, it wouldn't cost us.
An additional.
No, because you have economies of scale.
Depending on the student, it wouldn't necessarily be that student, you know, that student isn't, you know, necessarily sucking up, for a better, want of a better term, isn't sucking up their sixteen thousand dollars.
Right.
They're sucking up nine thousand, because the average is sixteen thousand. So seven thousand is going to a high-cost special education student. I'm not trying to be pejorative in any way about this, I'm just saying sixteen thousand's an average. And so we, that's why we need to understand the special education costs, and I think what's going out of the system, and then also what our per, our subject area costs.
And there certainly has been discussion at the general assembly level. I know O'Grady, Rep. O'Grady from Lincoln, has tried to put in some legislation to fix the funding formula for these sort of charters, the Mets, the Merrill Academies.
But until we understand it, we can't make the argument to our legislators that, hey, sign on for that, because we need to fix the system the way, you know, we're being taxed, and then we have to understand.
Have to understand it.
All right, so we want to focus on special ed, out-of-district, and the subject.
I think SED and subject are pretty fair to look at the information that way. The out-of-district, without knowing, you know, who the suburbans that we're being compared to, I don't know that it's a good comparison, because you could have charter schools in a town.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to know the comparator. I mean, I need to know that.
You just want to know what it is, what comprises our number.
I need to know that we're out of line with the comparator.
You need to know what comprises.
But I just want to know what our hard numbers are.
Right, you want to know what comprises the figure, right, I understand.
And I think that's for any of this, it's like, well, it kind of jumps out us comparing to it, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's unusual for us.
Now, one of the simplest.
Right, and then there may be very good reasons why our special education costs.
One is why it's a little higher, is that we're above the state average, we're about two percent higher in our student population for special needs. We're already, the last number I saw was eighteen, I believe the state was at sixteen, maybe even fifteen, it's been a while since I looked at the number. So, right there, we have a few more students. Now, we've done, we've taken steps to reduce over-identification, and it's starting to work. We're having fewer and fewer kids identified because of our ITI process that we've implemented at all the schools. So the numbers, we'll start, that number, again, will start to, we were at twenty percent just a couple of years ago. So, you know, it is going down, not as fast as we'd like it, but again, we don't control, we don't have a finite pool of students, where it's always moving, you know, and what their needs are.
And the students are still being served.
Sort of the question is, and, you know, you have to, you have to look at it two ways, too, you know, if we're reducing, you know, if we're reducing identification of students, that may not be serving anybody well, because we may be.
No, but we believe that, you know, there were students that didn't need the services that had been getting them.
But I'm just pointing that out, it's something that we need to be aware of, but also, you know, what protection do we have from something happening of, you know, twenty, thirty, you know, in a worst-case scenario, forty students moving into the district who have very high cost needs? It really is not, I just wanted to point that out.
It would be our, well, that's why, you know, we try to carry a reasonable surplus, too, so that we have.
You can't control that.
Because we never, we never want to spend it all for that purpose, you know, just look at this, this treatment plan.
Or the unanticipated costs.
Yeah, you just, again, like Middletown, it was a nightmare for them, where these five kids were very needy, and, you know, they didn't have that, the money wasn't accounted for at the start of the year, and they had to, you know, beg, borrow, and steal from within their budget to make it work.
Right, because they deserve an education, and we want to supply it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's absolutely the case.
Yeah, it's unanticipated, and having that reserve helps us.
But what have, one of the factors, and I'll have Rachel get me the data, but there are more students being identified with autism, and their support is much greater, in some cases, much more costly, than students, let's say, that have a speech. No, those numbers have, our autism numbers have, through the district, nationwide, have really spiked. So that's another thing we'll look at and explain, to say, well, look, here's, when we have it by identification, by year, in other words, are they learning disability? Is it speech? Is it language autism? And you'll see the autism column spike, and with that goes service, you know, depending on where the child is, costs that are much greater than what we've seen in the past.
Well, again, that's what we need to understand about special education.
No, I understand, no, I understand what you're looking at.
So let's do that, we'll have it, our next meeting, we'll start, do you want to dig, where do you want to start? Do you want to start out-of-district? Do you want to start special needs, or do you want to jump into the subjects?
Tell us what you want, and we'll have it settled.
What do you want to understand first and look at first? But I think you're right, Jerry, that's a good sort of start for this other student.
You know, personally, I think special education is the bigger outlier, and something I understand less.
And then we'll go into the others.
I'm certainly.
That's fine.
Because we have all summer, it's not like.
Yeah, it's true, although on the other hand, I feel like.
I always say that.
We can control how much we spend on the academics more than we can control what we spend on.
Let me, let's put it this way, it's a simple formula, special ed comes first.
True.
By law.
So let's understand it.
Statute, that comes first, that, that's the priority for our dollars, in every district. Districts run afoul when they don't want to meet the needs of the kids, and.
And it's better to understand what we can't touch, or what we can't really control, because then we'll have better, more insight when we understand what we can.
What we'll do is we'll have a breakdown of where the dollars go, what comprises total dollars for special ed, and then break it down for you where it goes, you know, number of teachers, special ed aides, you know, outside services.
Yeah, I think that's good, our next public discussion will be on that.
And it's just going to be a nice overview, and then hopefully it'll provide.
And then after that, maybe we can go into the subjects, like Carol said, and then our last kind of big bite will be the out-of-districts.
Are you more interested in the straight numbers that way versus a comparison when we get into SED?
No.
Really, I'm interested in our numbers, because ultimately, they compare it, or it doesn't make any difference.
But it does help me, because I need a frame of reference.
But you need to understand it first, before you compare.
And I can understand where, you'll say, well, yes, we're high, but that's because we know we have X number of students came on board, unusual students. But otherwise, I have no idea, you know, twelve hundred, eighteen hundred, until I see that we're at twenty-six hundred and the average is at eleven hundred. Then I want to know, yes, we know it's because of this reason.
Or if you say, we have twenty percent special ed in the district versus another district, you know, and other districts have twelve, there's got to be other districts out there that have twenty percent, you know, so what do their numbers look like? So I think Bill's right, we have to understand what's in ours first, but at some point.
We can go back and then fish specific details to say, okay, we're at sixteen percent, we'd like to see.
Find us another district.
Then find us, what are our sister districts at, and others that are within two or dial, two, you know, up or down by a variation of two or whatever.
Yeah, it might be best to get the comparator once we figure out what it is, what we're actually interested in comparing.
Agreed, agree.
All right, and we'll do it, we'll do it step by step.
And then we'll go from there, Carol, to the subjects, because I agree, we can control that.
That's definitely what we can control.
And then we'll start, we'll leave our out-of-district for last.
Right, and ultimately, if we really want to go looking for more funds from somewhere, whether it be from the budget, or from grants, or whatever, we'll have very solid reasons why we want to do that.
Right, I agree. Thank you very much, Doug and Bill.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
We'll have it.
Good information, and for the community.
We'll have some good July talk.
Yep. Announcements and reports?
Yes, just let me, I apologize. We had graduation last Friday that went to high school, went very well. The rankings, unfortunately, if you read the Daily News, again, Tiverton doesn't exist.
I guess not.
You know, we've only had the number-one-ranked school and been commended, the only school that's been commended, I believe, three years in a row, at Fort Barton. High School would move from typical to leading, and Ranger, the middle school, and Pecassett are strong, in the strong, typical category. So all our schools are doing very well, again, commend the principals and all our teachers, because as you see, there's, they don't get everything that we need, they, we know they need, so, our congratulations go out to them.
And the parents.
And to the parents who support us, who do the math.
That's right.
Who learn, I remember doing that with my children.
I learned so much doing the math that I can actually understand.
Yeah, so you can understand the budget conversation.
I can do the lattice math, but it's the only thing I remember.
That's all.
Anybody else?
I have an announcement. On June twenty-third and twenty-fourth, I'll be traveling to Washington DC with three of our teachers. We were asked to participate in a science alignment session that's going on between Rhode Island and Delaware, so they have funding to bring teachers from those two states together to spend two days looking at instructional resources that are out there right now for science, and how well they align to the new science standards. So Denise Truver will be joining me, along with Stacy Elkins and Lee Cusmano, so we should have some good information to bring back.
The two smallest states in the Union.
I want to talk to Michelle Obama about our health and wellness, how wonderful it is, so she can come visit. Thank you, thank you, okay.
I have a request that we hold a second meeting in June to discuss the elementary strings programs, because a lot of parents have asked to speak on that issue, and also an agenda item for high school jazz band scheduling. I've also gotten requests from parents to be able to discuss that.
A high school, okay, that's really something that needs to go through me. The high school, it has not come through me.
Nothing's come through you?
No, because it's not, the high school jazz, the schedules aren't done at the high school. I'm sorry, I talked to Mrs. Nicholas yesterday, and she told me they're not.
What do you mean, they have not been finished yet?
They're not finished.
Oh, okay.
And it needs to come through me.
So you're getting phone calls?
Yeah, I've been told, the parents were told, they've been completed and no changes can be made.
That, I talked to Mrs. Nicholas yesterday about it. Ms. McKinnon, he's here.
Okay, well, I, you know, I'd like to meet for the strings, could we just have that so that.
Sure.
You can make that announce, you know, and clear up any misunderstandings.
Well, the issue is, again, with students, and we'll have it on the agenda, students who, we only have so many offerings of sections.
No, we're talking about strings.
I am, no, I'm talking about jazz band. The jazz band issue is students can't take jazz band, they're being, they have to make choices. There are two students that I'm aware of that couldn't take it, and that the schedules are still being worked on. That's historically been the issue here at Tiverton, is the students progress, they have to make choices, simply because we don't have enough sections of courses.
Well, I think if they're not finished yet, then I, I mean, I don't know, maybe your calls were preliminary.
But we'll be, I'll be happy to talk about it. But those are the things I really wish would come to me, so I could address them.
Yes, my, yeah.
Was it your understanding that they had?
Yes.
No, no one's come to me, except Mrs. Nicholas. And I've talked to Mr. Vasat and Mr. McKinnon.
So maybe, maybe we just have an item that says high school scheduling, and you explain that schedules get, you know, created and recreated August and September.
No, they, they, they might be done by the end of June. Jack, do you know when they're going to be finished?
I think the end of June, the section's done.
Yeah, I mean, I know that when my son and my daughter were at the high school, it was not unusual for kids to get a schedule and find out if something was wrong, and in September, the changes would be made.
Oh, yeah, I know, Cooper had changes in the fall, but that, I think that's on a per-child basis.
Right, that largely, they're done.
They're still being worked on, but, yes, the schedule's almost complete, but, which is right about the right time to be done, is what I'm sure.
Well, but if, I guess if people have made a request that they want to.
We can put it on, sure.
And maybe it will be resolved.
Yeah, and then we can, there will be no discussion, but what was the other one?
The strings.
The elementary strings.
So two items. And I was gonna, just.
Yeah, can we talk about the strings briefly? I mean, the strings, the strings.
I don't, as an agenda item, I mean, because I, otherwise, I think if we discuss it under reports, then parents have to be allowed to.
Again, that's another item that hasn't been brought to my attention either, by these parents.
No, I.
These things have to be funneled to me.
I agree, definitely.
I have to be able to address them first, before they become agenda items.
So how about?
That's my job.
So, so do you want to reach out to?
No, they will do it this, I'm sorry, Doug, no, a positive, it doesn't matter now, it's already done.
All right.
Thank you, though.
Because certainly with the elementary strings, I can't, I don't know who you spoke with, but my understanding was it had already been, because I won't bring anything to the school committee, and I'm sure you're the same way, unless, my first question is, have you spoke to the student?
The only data I got was the letter that was sent by the teacher. Mrs. Black subsequently shared with me emails she received from other people.
Okay, well, then, we'll put it on the agenda then, but you're correct, things need to, need to, you know, people just, people need to understand that we can't help if things aren't going through.
Right, if they haven't already gone through the other steps.
Has to go through, yep.
So, I'm, I guess I'm a little confused, why can't we discuss it, because it was actually an agenda item that the, the person resigned, was not dismissed, but, let me just, just finish for a second, and she, because I got calls from parents as well, she made the letter public.
I saw that, yes.
She, she sent it to the presidents of the PTOs, and let me tell you what I understand as, in the form of a question.
Sure.
That this was a resignation, not a dismissal, it was not by any means a cancellation of the program, that there's nothing that says we are not gonna continue the program.
That's correct.
And it was basically motivated by, or, or her request was, again, to, to this committee in, in previous meetings, was that she wanted to change the conditions on the rich-
Jerry, I'm gonna have to make an awareness where we, we cannot-
We can't talk about personnel, no.
We've had a resignation, it was informational only.
Right.
It's on a consent agenda, we don't approve them, we don't reject them, any discussion beyond that really is an open meetings violation.
And, and the, I would, when we have put the agenda item on, I would call it a future of, or, or something, you write future of the strings program, and people think it has no future, but how we will be moving forward, you know, so that, Mr. Rurk, you can inform the committee and the parents.
And again, we-
Our, how our, what our strings program will look like next year.
We have a request, we have a request for an agenda item.
Maybe just like that, and, and that's the kind of thing where I'm, for you to give a report on, report back to us on what this elementary strings program will look like next year, is that something that you would want parents to call and ask you about first, rather than us putting it on an agenda where you can inform the community about-
I think that, what I would have done was, I would have explained, as Mr. Larkin mentioned, those points.
Perhaps we need a third agenda item discussing protocol for getting agenda items on and discussing issues within the school system, because I do think there is confusion of when you can just, what, what we can discuss, what we can't discuss, how open meetings work, and, I mean, understand, we'll talk about anything, anytime, but we have a very strict open meetings law, we'll get fined, and if we don't follow open meetings law, things that we decide will become null and void, so it would do us no good to talk about things and then have it be null and void, so it's not that we're trying to be pains or put things off, but we do have to follow the open meetings laws, and, and you don't even have to fill out an agenda request, you can call any one of us, and we'll, forty-eight hours, we can put something on, we can call a meeting with them, so maybe an agenda item to have, talk about the protocol, so people know, not only the steps, including going through you, but the steps of getting something on.
It's not that they have to go through me.
Well, but we can discuss the protocol.
But it's the idea that a lot of stuff can be solved-
Right, that's right.
Before it becomes-
Exactly.
Because our, the school committee's job is to conduct a business meeting, my job is to run the district.
That's right, absolutely.
And I'll be happy to put those items on the next agenda, and we can talk about it.
Thank you.
The three items.
Okay.
And do we, the date?
It's June twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, okay.
Oh, twenty-fourth, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Any other announcements?
I just, just sort of needed to make my financials, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm just not clear why we can't discuss the strings program right now, because it is on the consent agenda.
It's not, we have a resignation.
That's all it is.
To accept a resignation on the consent agenda, it's not the program.
We didn't have it on the agenda simply because it was just, it was a resignation.
Right.
All this occurred after the agenda was done.
I see.
So, the next meeting-
It's, it's a personnel action, it is not about the program.
So, the next meeting that Carol asked for, we'll put it there.
We'll discuss.
And then we discuss it then, and then have at it, and talk about whatever.
Just like we are, you know, we have the resignation, the retirement of a remedial math teacher, we are not now gonna discuss remedial math at Ranger, it's just not, it's a, it's under personnel action, under the consent agenda, a consent agenda is informational only, there's no action needed by us.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the meeting will be?
June twenty-fourth.
At seven.
June twenty-fourth.
So that was the one we had canceled?
That's the one we weren't gonna have a second one.
Right, so any chance we could have it to twenty-fifth?
Can have it any day you guys want.
Yeah, 'cause you made plans for the twenty-fourth. Yeah, 'cause you thought we weren't gonna have one.
Tried to make some plans.
And we can do it earlier or later, because-
Or twenty-third, for that matter, or-
Or earlier in the day, is that what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah.
Or you're, that whole day is bad for you, Jack.
No, no, I could, I could be here at five-thirty, six.
Usually, everyone's got a more flexible schedule, and then, once the school gets-
Wanna do it at five-thirty, can everyone be here?
Well, it's not as much for us as this is, these are parent requests.
That's right, yeah, they won't be able to be here, because they'll be working.
Make it for seven.
No.
So, we're changing the date.
So what's the date you'd rather have?
What's the twenty-fifth, Jerry, that's a Wednesday, right? That's okay with me.
Twenty-fifth's good, with me, Carol.
Bill, so twenty-fifth.
Yep.
We just wanna make sure that our parents know.
Well-
It's not the regular-
If whoever contacted you, let them know, and-
Okay.
And we'll post it and everything, you know?
Maybe we could have the three elementary schools send out a email.
Oh, that's true.
That, that'll be on the agenda.
We have plenty of time to get the information out.
Is that a yes?
We can, we can, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we don't, we don't-
Mr. Rurk, he wants to send out an email, email the school.